And so we think this is a great, great way to be able to communicate. This is something that, I think it was in twenty, whatever year I became city manager, when I was going through city managers' requirements and obligations within the charter. An annual report was in there, and I hadn't seen where one had been done for as long back as I could go. And so I thought this would be beneficial, so we've been doing this ever since. Hopefully, it's a good, good document for you to, again, like I said, just kind of get a good understanding of the departments. I put your priorities that you had worked on at the council retreat, and I know you're going to refine those as we move forward, but I think it's, it's a good starting document for you. What we included in that, within the priorities, is still building off from the strategic plan, which was a good document that we've really been moving forward with, and so I want to make sure we still kind of reflect back to those strategic plan final recommendations. And so, so those are included in those priorities as well. You got any suggestions regarding things that we should see in the annual report? Love to hear that in the future. I think the communications director, her and her team, put this together every year. I think they do a great job. And but if there's some things that you see in here that's like, okay, I think this would be really beneficial for the public to have, let me know, because we'd like to include it, you know, within, within this document. We are becoming better at collecting data, and we're starting to do that at every department level. That's why you're seeing numbers from, you know, Donna's in the audience, I'll pick on rec. You're seeing, that's what happens when you come down. But you see, you're seeing numbers from rec, some numbers that we never really collected before, right? How many, how many people are participating in some of the events that rec puts on? How many, how many youth are we servicing? How many youth or how many adults are participating in the different programs? And so we really are focused on collecting that data so that we can then turn it around, and, and that helps us as we determine future budget impacts and, and just what that community engagement level is. And so that's been an area of focus for us. So hopefully you enjoy this, and, and it's a document that you can refer back to. We have, if we haven't already, we're pushing that out to the public today, and so, so the public will have that annual report, and it'll be something that they can refer to as you move into some of your budget deliberations for first and second reading coming up. So it'll be a good document for them as well. So now we'll move into what I would, what we refer to as the executive overview of the FY twenty-five budget. And you're going to have, you're going to have your budget documents, and this will be included in there, but I just want to provide you some of the highlights of, of the overview, so you know where we're at. As you know, we have, we have had numerous discussions regarding the budget through those workshops and conversations, kind of led me to where my recommendation is for the council moving forward. And so what you will see in the, in the budget document you're going to work on when we move into your phase of future discussions is the, the manager's overall budget increase for FY twenty-five, which would include intergovernmental, municipal, and school, is six point nine percent. I know that, you know, as a council, you're really trying to work towards that six point five percent. What this leaves you in for some space in here, you've also talked about fund balance, and what would the fund balance, if you were to apply a little more out of the fund balance, what would that look like? If you were to apply two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the fund balance, which I think is, it's very reasonable to be able to do, we have a, we have a good balance, I guess you could say, within that, and a good range for you. If you were to apply that two hundred and fifty thousand, that would put you right at six point five percent overall for the, for the budget. You still have later in this workshop to talk about what you would like to do, as well as there's still the tentative workshop for next week, and so you can work through that as well. You know, I think that if you take a look, a couple of the highlights that I wanted to, to bring forward is that if, we've already talked about where some of the driving demand has been as it pertains to salary increases over the last couple of years, we've discussed that. I guess for anybody watching, I just want to make sure we, that they continue hearing some of those driving, driving issues. The, if you take a look at, if you were to back out the increase for those salaries as we were going through and looking at some of the math, the, the overall increase would have been four percent. That four percent would have put the city below the four point one CPIU that is currently set. And so, so it's a good, to me, that's a good bar for you to know where we're coming in at. Couple of other things that, that we looked at was, you know, where are some of those driving? So if you look in the budget message, you're going to see an additional driver other than salaries, you're going to see the GA budget, and we've talked about that. We've talked about the fact that the GA increase is three hundred and ninety-eight percent over the previous year. And, you know, I think the legislative session will close on Wednesday. It does not look like there'll be anything that may continue forward. It might, but we're not sure yet. That's still yet to be determined. Still in that works has been whether or not that ninety percent will move forward for reimbursement. I don't think it will. The mayor and I have talked about that. We've talked with others that are in Augusta working on this initiative. We've had conversations with our affiliate groups, like the mayor's coalition and the service center coalition, as we monitor these, and we have, we have lobbyists that work on, on some of these issues. It does not look like that's going to happen. So, so this budget absorbs that full, full increase and not going from the seventy to ninety percent within general, general assistance reimbursement.
What percent increase? What was that percent increase?
Three hundred and ninety-eight percent. Yeah. So what was approved in FY twenty-four was a hundred and eighty thousand, eight twenty-five. What's being proposed in the twenty, FY twenty-five budget is nine hundred and one thousand two hundred. We could adjust that number all day in, at the end, but ultimately, as a municipality, by state statute, we're still required to meet those needs if the need presents itself and they meet all the qualifications to apply for general assistance. So we're doing our best to, to ballpark where we think we're going to be coming in at based on trending of what we've seen in the last few months. You know, we, I've had a conversation with the mayor, actually, regarding, you know, last year's budget amount compared to where we actually came in at. And we were seeing the upward swing of that the last couple of months of, of the, of the FY twenty-three year, and we were starting to see that trend. That was that housing was just wasn't available. And so the way that Auburn has really maintained their GA budget has been the fact that housing hasn't been there. That's our number one reimbursement for general assistance. So if that housing's not there, then we're not seeing those large expenses. Housing became available through opportunities that were provided to, regarding offsetting the rental amounts with, for people applying for, for housing. So with those offsets, that opened up the housing market for, for many folks to now not only qualify in general assistance, but also qualify by using that supplemental. That supplemental's now gone away, yet the housing is still there, so we're still doing our best to meet the current needs of those that have those housing rentals currently. So those are the, those pieces that we've talked about, but I want to, I made sure I highlighted in the budget message, because it's going to be important as I look at this as a, as a document for next year, as we go back, and we've had a whole year of now executing the FY twenty-five budget, and we're preparing for the FY twenty-six budget, the budget message is a good document to go back to say, all right, what did we, what was our driving needs at that time? And, and the budget message allows for that to happen. What you'll also see in the budget message is I took a few positions from a few of the departments and did a comparison of the FY twenty-three budgeted amount for entry positions and what the entry positions are today for those same positions. And so within Public Works, I took two positions out of each of the three departments. So Public Works, and these are our, our largest departments, right, that have been really driving a lot of our work needs. I took the entry level for the equipment operator two position. In FY twenty-three, the starting, the starting salary for that position was thirty-five thousand, six dollars. FY twenty-five, the starting salary for that position is forty-three thousand, two twenty-one.
Are you going to provide this documentation?
I am, yeah. And you're going to see these entry amounts, right? Those are entry, but what you're not seeing is the ripple effect that takes place in these collective bargaining units for every position moving up, up through each of these departments. So we might have a, a position with one of these collective bargaining units that has an entry level position, but then there's five to maybe twelve steps that that person could then go take through for each year that they've been with the department. And so each one of those have a built-in step increase of anywhere from two to five percent, depending on how many steps are within a contract. So if you were to look at the police department, they have larger percentages between their steps, but it takes them, there's only four steps compared to maybe twelve steps that the fire department has within their contract. So depending on that, each collective bargaining unit is a little different. But it's, it's a, it's a ripple effect then, not only for those entry positions, but then also for those supervisory positions. So if you take a look at police, and so the entry level for a patrol officer in FY twenty-three was forty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars. In FY twenty-five, that entry position is now sixty-two thousand, seven thirty-three. So that, that's where you're starting to see what that wage demand has been over the last couple of years. But now that's an entry level position that now has five more steps within the patrol unit, plus it has two more steps within the detective unit, then it has three steps within the sergeant's commit, contract, and then an additional three steps in the lieutenant. So you can see how that now will, will definitely push out as we start seeing those, those entry level positions increases. And so we needed to do that for recruitment, and that was, that was the driving demand. Those counselors that are, that were here last year when we, when we settled some of these contracts, we talked about a lot of those impacts moving forward and the need to be able to, to hire at that rate. So a good example for the, for that entry patrol, the additional position that I, I have in the document, as well as the entry level patrol sergeant. And so in FY twenty-three, that salary was starting off at seventy-six thousand, five ninety-five, and that, that salary today in FY twenty-five will be ninety-one thousand, two oh eight. So that's, that's the numbers that we're working through. I've also done the same thing for fire, so you'll be able to see the fire numbers on there. But I want to make sure that you see it through the budget message, but the, the public sees it as well when we talk about why are we seeing such a demand? Because there were some contracts that had settled in last year that we were able to introduce in the, in the budget, but then there were also those wage reopeners that took place after we had settled that budget because of what took place within the workforce. And so, so you'll see that. I think the, the break, breakout of the city expenses compared to, so if you were to break out salary and fringe, you were to look at the operating expenses, and you were to look at intergovernmental and county taxes, that always stays within one percent of, of each other, and that doesn't change much. So for salary and fringe, it's forty-seven percent of our budget. If you take a look at operating, it's forty-four percent, and then county and intergovernmental is at nine percent. Not a lot has changed within, within that, other than a percent here and there, and that stays pretty consistent. The driving, the budget drivers that I mentioned, obviously workforce was one. Our debt service is the other component. We'll talk a little bit more about the debt service when I get into the capital improvement presentation. But the, the debt service, what we were able to do last year was retire a significant amount of debt compared to the debt that we had brought on was actually allowed us to stay pretty neutral and actually reduced our debt service last year. This year, we're still retiring, in FY twenty-five, we'll still retire over eight million dollars worth of debt. However, last year we brought on twelve million, twelve million dollars, so we're not retiring the same amount. And, and we won't see that moving forward unless there's some really major changes that you're looking to take. And it's not because there's, you know, big swings within our road reconstruction projects. We're certainly doing less with the amounts that we're budgeting because of just the cost and the drivers that we see within that, but we do have some larger projects that we're moving forward with, one of them being Engine Two on South Main Street. We're, we're breaking that project out over the next three years. And so you're seeing, you know, last year was three million, this year it'll be two million, there'll still be a need for up to two million. We'll see when the final numbers come in next year. So we're breaking those out over a three-year period. So you are seeing those adjustments within, within the, within the CIP. The other piece that you'll see in the CIP is, for the last couple of years, school hasn't had any debt, any capital bonding, other than the high school. They've been able to kind of hold off on anything else. This will be the first year that that comes back in, and you're going to see nearly a million dollars in there. So again, that debt service has nothing to do with what you will approve in FY twenty-five. This is the debt service that's being brought over from FY twenty-four. And then the third area is the GA services that we, we talked about. So if you look at the combination of just those three budget drivers, it's about seventy-seven percent of the total increase of the driving increase of the five million, seven hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. So those, just those three categories alone demonstrate really where we're driving these I think our, our goal consistently tries to make sure that we're controlling costs for our taxpayers. I think that we do take a look and, take a look at the historical numbers of where the city's been, and I talked a little bit about this at a previous, one of the previous meetings, but when we take a look at, you're going to see a five-year fiscal trend. When you take a look at the municipal tax levy, that's averaged, even with this year's increase, it's averaged three percent a year over the last five years. So you're seeing the larger swings these last year and this year, but still, if you take a look at over the last five years, it's been, it's been pretty consistent at three percent. Our non-tax increase, though, our non-tax revenue, rather, increases have steadily grown, and we're averaging ten percent in the non-tax revenue. And so that's coming from really our excise taxes for vehicles, that's been a driving amount for us. Our state revenue share has been a driving amount. The school has been getting reimbursed at a, to where they need to be at the fifty-five percent within the school fund. Actually, we're a little greater than that based on, because of some of the special services that, that Auburn provides, so it's, it's a little greater than fifty-five. So those, all those take into account the fact that our non-tax revenue has been healthy, and we've been seeing a good increase in that. So looking ahead, one thing that was in the budget last year that we were not able to, well, I'm sorry, was not in the budget, we were actually looking at, at ARPA funds for this, and we didn't ever, that never made it to the table, and we never moved forward with it, but I actually have it in this year's budget, is doing, and we've talked a little bit about this, is having a third-party analysis regarding a workload assessment for the city. We've kind of had some conversations about this in the past. I think this is really essential when we look at how do we right-size the city, how do we right-size the services that we provide? And this is a big lift. This will be something that'll be, I think, is important. This is more than just doing a market analysis of our salaries. That'll be included in that, but it's really a small amount. The, the largest piece here is what's that workload that's needed to carry out the different types of services that we're providing? And so for the FY twenty-six budget, what I'm hoping to do is bring that before you, because when we talk about, it's interesting, Auburn's charter was written in a way where it talks about programs when you look at the budget. It says that, basically says that every program that we provide here in the city will be presented to you in, in the budget, and it really uses the term programs. And I think that, you know, I wasn't there when they wrote the charter and they put that in there, but I think if you take a look at that, it's because when you look at reductions within a budget, you have to look at programming. It's, it's what's the services that you're looking to either reduce or increase based on the programs that we're providing? And so whether that's what we provide for fire service, police service, public works, rec, all those are really, they have multiple programs within those divisions. And so having a strong document for a workload assessment, I think, is really vital for us. And so, so that's incorporated within this budget for us to be able to do an RFP, go out and bid that out, and, and then provide you really some, some solid documentation based on our, say, take PD for an example, based on our call volume for police, what is the expectation for the level of offices that we have providing that, that demand for services? And then the same thing for fire. Digging into EMS will be an important piece of that. That'll be vital for us to take a look at. We take a look at what we're currently saying we're going to do for programming on rec, well, what does it take for us to be able to provide that level of service? So that's one area, that's a looking ahead initiative. I think the other, you know, as we move forward in FY twenty-six and what will be happening, starting in FY twenty-six moving forward, are all the capital infrastructure projects that we're, we're executing right now. These are, these are a heavy, heavy demand on resources as we move forward. These are essential, we need to do them. But if you take a look at, we've had a, a large part of the, the new high school going online. Our staff has been directly involved in that, and now they're directly involved in making sure that we are part of the process in maintaining that, that facility with some of the, with the MOU that we did with the school department. But the, the new rec building for PAL will be a big project for us as we move forward. That's a, that's a nine million dollar infrastructure building that will be starting next month. So you'll be getting your invite for the groundbreaking here really soon. So the demo of the old building, that we're already out of that building now, and so there's nothing being run out of that building right now, it's already, that's already happening, and then, but we'll be doing that groundbreaking really soon. We'll be doing the groundbreaking for Engine Two, the new fire station, really soon. So that's going to be happening. You know, I'm, I'm hoping we'll see that within the next few months, and we'll be ready to, to initiate that project. And then the work for the, the new public safety building that is underway, a contract has been, we've selected, rather, an architect for that project. The public safety facility ad hoc committee met last, last week as a kickoff for that initiative, and so there are a lot of moving pieces with that that's happening. We'll be settling on the agreement for the contract manager soon. So there's a lot of elements that are taking place with these, these infrastructure facilities. And so, so that's looking forward, that'll be a, a major piece. And then it's what we're doing as far as our digital outreach. And this has to do with the software platforms that we are, we are launching. SmartGov is now available online, I guess you could say it's a, it's a soft launch, maybe is a way to say it. We haven't done a lot of promoting of it, but it's on there. We did work through a few developers who were, who we work with on a regular basis that were going to be drawing out some permits, and we said, use SmartGov. We gave them access to it so that they could test it out for us, work through any, any hiccups, any issues with that. They've been doing that, and we've had nothing but praise back on this program. It's, it's been one of the best that they've had to, to work with. It's, it's easy for them to manage, all those things. So, so we're really excited about the work that they, they're doing. But then it's also asset essentials. That's another large project that we've been working on. And this is identifying every piece of asset that we have in the city and being able to track it, not only in a, a spreadsheet form, but also to map out all these resources. So if you were to look at a map, you will be able to know exactly where all our assets are located, and whether that's down to whether or not it's a, how much we have for street signs. How many street signs do we have? Where are they located? To where's our rolling stock? And what is that rolling stock? And then also, what's the, and it builds it out even further where what's our estimated, what's the maintenances on that rolling stock, but then what's the replacement schedule for that rolling stock? So this has been a big lift for the team. They are getting that out and making it ready. But this will also tie into the new, what was the reported program. And so this will be the new way that the public will be able to report an issue that they see, but they'll also be able to track that issue. Who is it assigned to? Gives a response back. Who they, can they communicate with? They have a tracking number that they can follow up with. So this is a great way for us to be able to engage the public on something that they bring forward. So it just doesn't feel like I filled this out and now it's gone to a black hole somewhere, and I'm not sure if anybody even saw it. So this will be a great tool for us to be able to manage and be able to do that. So that, that is the budget message. Kelsey's provided it for you. I know there's a lot more that we could probably discuss and go through in that, but I think that's a, the initial, the initial piece of, of the city manager's budget. Questions on that before I move into CIP?
Any questions from the council?
We can get more, you're going to have time here on the agenda to get into more, but anything specifically right now from what I've mentioned? All right. So the next piece is the, the message for the capital improvement program. And so if you take a look at, I think it's under your budget message, it's a little thicker document. Yeah, right under, yep, that's the one. Couple highlights in here that I want to make. You know, this is the, even though it talks about the plan, and that's a plan that you've already approved, there's some messaging in here and some information that I think is important for you when you go to make your decisions on what will we bond this year. So this is the documentation that helps you in that decision-making. I just looked at it, and some small print in there. There's some small number. You'll have this electronically, so you can zoom in on your, on your tablets. Couple highlights in here that I want to make. One, we provide, what's the current status of the bonded projects that, that we have right now that are either outstanding or within that bond year, they're completed. So we have, you know, we don't have anything that's beyond, I think it's FY twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't have anything beyond FY for the twenty-twenty-two bonding period. So some of those you're going to see as complete, some of them are still, still in process. Sorry, page three. Yeah, it's a small number graph. I won't go through those, but I'm making it available for you to kind of know, oh, this, you know, you might have heard about this capital project, it's probably still underway, this is where we're at on that. At some point, there's a, you know, we look at a project and say, okay, this project is either, it's complete but yet not fully expended, or it's it's complete but yet not fully expended, um or it's complete and it may have gone over. That overage is usually what comes back before you with council, we need to redirect this other unobligated uh bond amount to cover that overage. We do our best to ballpark some of these projects, but some of them, especially with the driving costs that have happened since these bonds were approved, um, we're managing that within the project itself. So what we've started to do is um, as numbers come in, we might be trimming down what that initial project was going to be to make sure we stay within budget. Uh, but there are some things that there's no way to stay within the budget. It may need to go over and that comes back before you, be- before you where they reappropriate these other unobligated bond dollars to be able to cover those costs. Um, so that's what's on page eight. On page nine is your debt service analysis. So this provides you with um our outstanding debt at the beginning of the fiscal year of FY oh-nine. And then it breaks it out um each year between what our, the beginning of the fiscal year, what our debt obligation was, to what the debt that was issued for that year, and then what the debt retirement for that year was. And you'll see where these shift because we've had, we've had larger projects that have, that might come off that are beyond just the general obligation uh bond. And then what we have remaining at the end of that fiscal year. So you can see where the average debt between FY sixteen and FY twenty-four um issued was twenty-one, twenty-one million.
Page four.
Page four. Yeah, just turn the page from that last one we were on. Um. Leading up to the new high school, council initiative was to try to reduce as much of our debt as we could before we took on that new debt for the new high school. So leading up to twenty-two million, uh six hundred and one uh thousand was reduced um in anticipation of that borrowed amount of one hundred and twenty-four million for the new high school. So that hundred and twenty-four million, it's always important to keep in mind that the state is obligated for eighty-eight percent of that hundred and twenty-four million. Um, it's the, it's our goal to make sure that we're staying between that. Our bond council recommends for a, for the city to be healthy when we go out for bond. Uh, so for our, a good bond rating for us means that we're staying in that twelve to fourteen percent. Um, and twelve to fourteen is the total, of the total operating budget. So that's of the, we, we also carry on the school debt. So it's a, it's twelve to fourteen percent of the hundred and twenty-one million would be our operating number. So that's the number that we would work off from, not just the city's, because we have everybody else's debt. Um. The um, the other piece within here uh to keep in mind, uh again, making sure to go back to the point that twelve to fourteen percent shows that we're healthy, means we're taking care of our infrastructure, and we have the, we have the ability to pay our debt. And so staying in that range demonstrates that. That's why the city has had um outstanding bond ratings. And we do well when we go out on the market to sell our bond. Um, and we will schedule, Kelsey and I will get um, we will get uh our bond agent to come in and do a presentation, especially before we do the bond for the public safety building. So you have a good overview of what goes into that process uh when we go out on the market to sell the bond. Um, we were extremely successful when we did the high school. Um, because we have a great rating, because we broke this, we, we advanced um the second part of the school bond earlier than what we had anticipated because it was gonna have a better yield for us if we had moved on it quickly. And in doing that, we've saved tremendous amount of uh dollars for the city. And uh, so we're looking at the same thing. Kelsey and I met with the uh bond um agent on Friday and we talked through the public safety bond as well as our upcoming bond. So we have a good sense of where we are as a city, what to anticipate. Um, because that public safety bond will be, uh will be important for us to make sure we've kinda worked through this, what's the market looking like? And what's the best timing? And some of that is about the timing component. And so um, so we have them working on um some scenarios right now. On if we break this bond into two bonds, what does that look like for public safety? Is there a benefit for us? Is it a better benefit for us to go ahead and bond the whole amount? And then turn around and take partial of that and invest that? Because it's returning a better yield for us um by holding on to that bond amount. Because we might be going off to bond for, say, a three percent, but yet we're gonna be able to turn around a five percent and interest if we were to do the full bond now. And so those are things that we're gonna play out. So they, they do a great job for us, we could probably give them twenty different scenarios and they would run all of those for us and give us a good, a good report on what best should we do. So we've had a longstanding relationship uh with our bond agents and so uh, so we see, see that we're gonna be in a good place for this. They also provide a lot of the numbers that you're looking at in this, in this report for us. If you were to turn the page to uh page five. So there is state statute as it pertains to what's the legal debt margin for a municipality? Um, there's a formula that's built in here regarding what the state's valuation is for the city. Um, ensuring that we are fifteen percent of the state valuation. Um. If you look on here, you look at the legal maximum. And so this is municipal and school, however, you back out a school bond um that you have with um um that the state is is reimbursing, so you have to back that out. So you're gonna see that adjustment in the, in the numbers when you look at our total, total bond, general obligation debt. So you see the legal maximum is fifteen percent. So that means as a city, we could bond four hundred and forty-five million dollars as a city. Um, before you meet the threshold of the state's um maximum. So as a city, again, backing out uh roughly around a hundred and four million, I think where, where, where we have estimated for the school. Um, that means the, currently, the city's bond is a obligation debt is fifty-three million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand. So of the legal limit, it's twelve percent of the actual legal, which is of the four hundred and forty-five billion. So I just don't want you to confuse that twelve percent with the twelve to fourteen percent that I talked about because as a city, when we're supposed to be between that twelve and fourteen, we're coming in a little less than ten. So um, so that's where we are and that's, but that's including uh the school. Because when they look at it, they'll, even though the state's reimbursing it, the bond council looks at that and so. That, that ten percent includes the school, right? So we're still way below, we're not at the twelve. But it, what it does demonstrate and what we will, when we go out to market in this a complete document that that's put together by our, our bond agencies, it talks about our recent investments. And so we are making some really um substantial infrastructure investments right now. That helps us when we go out to market for, for our bonds. Uh, because it shows that we are maintaining our infrastructure. Um, we also provide, um, so they provide us a breakdown of what has been our bonds for uh public works equipment to demonstrate that we're doing well with what we're replacing on that, as well as other infrastructure within the city. And so we break those out by, by those categories, so um. So a good document here, I think it's, it does show that we're well below, as you can see, our margin for additional borrowing is that three hundred and ninety-one million, obviously, we're not, these are not numbers that we're ever gonna come, come close to. Uh, but it's a good, you know, it's, it's a good indication that we're well below any state requirement. Um, but we're still below uh what our bond agent talks to us about regarding the um, you know, twelve to fourteen percent. We're still below that. Um. And then in the, in the message, you're also gonna see where we talk about just roads and how we try to balance that out. Um, it's, it's, these are moving targets that we look at. Uh, the numbers that I have here for you here is based on what the city manager's recommendation will be for CIP. I'm not recommending the full amount. That'll be up for the council, the, the what's reduced and we'll go through that list. Um, we did put Merrill Road on the list of the, the five-year plan, um but I'm not recommending it in this first year. That would have increased our bond up another three million dollars. Um, that will be a council decision. If, if you're looking and you're saying, okay, let's go ahead and move with that, we can, we can work that in. But right now, the estimates from Merrill Road are coming in at three million. And so, um, the things that we can look at is, do we, um, if we had that conversation tonight and you're like, well, do we really wanna look at this? Do we break that, do we break that project out into chunks? Right, do we say from, say, Western Main Transportation, if you take, um, that's located on Merrill Road, from there to Hotel Road? What would that be? And is there more of a cost to break this out rather than doing the full amount? Because next year, that cost is gonna be even higher because it's just the cost of goods, right, and the materials. Um. So the next few pages is the uh plan that you've already adopted. Um. So because this is a separate document, we were merging several documents together. Um, if you flip all the way to the page where it's the FY twenty-five only document.
This.
I'm sorry.
Twelve.
Yes.
Is it numbered? I didn't see it.
It's very tiny, we had printer, I had to switch between three different printers, so yes, it's page twelve.
Kelsey, can you bring that up on the screen for me? This might be easier, we'll be able to look at, look at it right here on the screen. What you're gonna see in, in this spreadsheet is you're gonna see how we, um, what's the funding source for this project? Cause you might look at all these projects and you're gonna total them up and you would say, okay, we're well over what we're recommending for bonding. However, some of these projects are coming out of, it might be operating or it might be um grant funding or some other funds. And so, um, Kelsey, just let me know.
It's gonna take a minute, I'll have to log into my.
Okay.
Just to clarify, um, on page thirteen, the sum for the operating, that's coming out of the five hundred thousand dollars, which is newly included in capital uh funds in the budget, correct?
Yeah, that four hundred and eighty-two thousand, absolutely, that's in the budget right now. That's in the six, that's part of the six point nine percent increase, um, so it's the four eighty-two. I think I had said I was, my target was to be at about five hundred thousand. Uh, if you look at that overall category, there's about forty-four thousand that's generally in there as standard uh building, operating um expenses in the operating budget, uh but it's called capital expenses. And it's the work that Derek does for repairs on some of our capital infrastructure like our HVAC systems that might need some kind of service throughout the year. So it's that forty-four plus the four eighty-two, so if you were to look at that line item, you'll see where it's a little greater. And that's because we brought this four eighty-two into it. Great question, Mayor, yep. Um, so in here, you'll see um the bond amount. And we'll need you to, to add to that is that the schools coming in at um, at a million dollars. So this is, the city's is, is thirteen million. If you look at page thirteen in that first column, thirteen million, uh five hundred and forty thousand, seven fifty. Um, schools coming in at a, a million dollars with their requests. Fourteen-five, yep.
Oh, I have the total right here, there we go.
You have the schools total?
Uh, so the school has let me know that they will give us a final total uh by April twenty-fifth, but they're currently sitting at nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, but they believe additional will be added to that. So we had factored in about a million in for the schooling, just to cover that, any change that they make before the twenty-fifth.
And you'll see too, council, especially new councils coming on, you'll see that your approved bond may not always, if you were to go back and you were to look and say, hey, we approved this amount uh last year. Why is our bond saying that the, what we obligated is less? It's because we do receive credits for when we do some of our bonding, that reduces that amount. So this is the, the full amount, but sometimes there's a reduced value in that that gets credited back to the, to the actual bond over the ten-year period. All of our bonds are at ten years. However, if we are bonding something that our bond agent is looking at and saying, this bond shouldn't be any greater than a three-year period, especially when we used to bond last year bonded uh police cruisers um or other types of vehicles like that. We would actually set those up separately so that they came off in three years. Uh, moving forward, if this budget is approved, you'll no longer, no longer do that. Um, you know, over a ten-year period, um, if you were to keep investing five hundred, just five hundred thousand every year, you know, over a ten-year period, you're looking at a well over a million dollars in savings of, of interest payments by doing that. So that's, that's the goal of working that up. And I think we could, as, as we move forward in future budgets, there's, there's more that we should be working into our operating capital. So we're not bonding out that full amount. So this loan, this year alone, it's about a hundred and, a hundred and seven thousand dollars that you're saving uh by not bonding out uh that five hundred thousand. Mayor.
So just to follow up on that, um, it seems like between now and next year's budget, it would be helpful if we could develop a policy of um some type of a dollar value at which it goes into bonding and below that is lower. Because there's, there's a whole bunch of things on here that um, they may be durable goods, but um, in the scheme of things, they're not that expensive compared to larger projects, you know, a fire truck or a building or things like that.
Yep, yeah. And I think as we, I think we look for opportunities in future budgets to shift more into that as those opportunities present themselves, depending on whether or not there's additional revenue coming in. Well, how do we offset that by uh shifting some of what we would normally typically bond and bring it into that operating budget? So yeah, I think we should do that. I think uh, we should drive this by policy. If we drive it by policy, then it's consistent, it's predictable, right? We can, we know that this is what we'll be doing.
Yeah, and your point about the interest is well taken. Um, it, it, it doesn't seem like a good business practice to be bonding uh even if they're durable goods, low-value items because the amount that it adds in interest is, is probably not uh beneficial as opposed to just increasing the amount over time that's in the, in the regular operating budget.
Yep. Yeah, and I think that as we look at some other projects and, you know, I've talked, I've talked with the police chief already. So take a look at the uh uh mobile data terminals, right, that are in the budget. What we continue to do is we buy all of them at the same time. Now, there's a good reason why we do some of that because um, if we didn't, we'd have four different types of systems that we're trying to operate and so. But what we should be doing is we should be working in a um, a special revenue account that we can allocate those funds each year. So if we have everything on a maintenance schedule and we set up these maintenance schedules, basically what the mayor was just referring to, is that you have now the opportunity to put those money, those monies into that special revenue account, they're building that up. We're gaining interest on that, right, because it's in a, it's in an interest-bearing account for us. However, when it comes time for that, you'll see that come in under other, right? That'll come in because we've already set that money aside and we'll be paying for it, for the money that we have already determined. So those are, because those are those predictable expenses that we know we're gonna have. Those MDTs are never gonna last much longer than their warranties, just the way it works. You're, you're getting as, you know, they're bouncing around in cruisers, jumping around, it's just, it's not, they're not gonna last any longer than the warranties. And so if we know that, we can start building that out. Take that hundred thirty-five thousand, break it out over the next five years, put that into a special revenue account. Now we're just drawing from that special revenue account.
I mean, it looks like we could be doing that, fire hoses and
Absolutely.
all this other stuff that's in here, yeah.
Yeah, they're just gonna take time, it's just, you don't wanna, it would be a big swing to do it one year. But I think we slowly start doing it. This, this is the beginning and now moving forward, setting up the FY twenty-six, you'll start seeing those expenses that'll be coming in, that'll be set aside for that special, special expense account uh for those departments as we identify those, so. Yep.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah.
I've got a question about, about the debt service. Do we have, in this exercise, do we have any good estimates on how much uh debt payments will, or I guess debt will be retiring in this year? And also, what's the, do we have estimates on the debt service of fourteen point five million added? Cause I, I'm kinda thinking about this as, what are debt services, does it go up or down next year?
Yeah, so it'll, it'll go up, cause we're recommending about fourteen, fourteen and a half million. We're retiring eight million, two hundred and fifty thousand is what'll be retired.
And that number that he just mentioned, the eight million, two hundred and fifty- And that number that he just mentioned, the eight million, two hundred and fifty thousands in the table on page four.
Yep, yep. There was a second part, um, to your question, I, um.
Who's asking?
No, I was just trying to quantify the, the net difference between debt retired and debt added.
Okay.
Could you, uh, elaborate on the special financing category? I know we talked about the, uh, engine replacement and then it was revaluation, but what's, how's that work?
Yeah, those are, those are gonna be initiatives that we know we're gonna have, excuse me, we know we have coming. It's, it's more for having to set the actual, um, purchase agreement, um, without you being able to set that so that they could go ahead and order it, but you're also obligating a future council to pay for it in a way that's not incorporated into the bond. So we're, we're working that through, right now we're, we're, we're calling it a special revenue. Um, that's gonna come back to you in a separate order. And so, um, because we know that, we know we need to do it, it's just how we set it up is gonna be important.
Can you, can you, um, talk a little bit about the, um, rationale for pushing out Marrow Road? When I look at this, if I, if I look at the, um, adopted plan, i- in effect, the way I look at it is the FY twenty-five adopted plan was nothing more than saying, the, the, it's breaking out priorities and saying, the things that we put in FY twenty-five, we knew we wouldn't be doing all of those, but those are the highest priority items. And if we're, um, in the thirteen, uh, million range for the municipal budget, in effect, we're saying we're gonna push ten million of that down the road, and you end up in the same position every year. And for whatever the reason is, Marrow Road has gone to such a point that it's gonna cost three million dollars at least to do the reconstruction of that, but it's a job that's got to be done at some point. And, um, I can understand that it would dramatically increase this year's, um, bond, but by kicking this down the road, it's still a three million and then it's three million plus inflation the next year. And in the not-too-distant future, we're going to be, um, letting out the bond for the public safety facility. And, um, what's the rationale behind pushing that down the road? Cause I'm worried about at some point it comes up against the public safety facility and we'll have, um, not just a steep increase in one year, a steep increase with another three million dollars added on top of it.
It's one of those reconstruction projects that, um, are, it's coming in separate from the normal process that we would go through. And so typically, you wouldn't see, um, a standalone road project. Um, that was because of more of a, you know, more of a demand of what we're hearing within the public. Um, if you were to look and actually rate that road, um, I think a good example of this is going back to Park Avenue, even though that was tied in with, with the state. Uh, the state wasn't ready to move forward on that road until it actually got to that tipping point. And so, Marrow Road isn't at that tipping point, it's bad. I think we can all, anybody that's been on that would tell you that, that's a bad road. Um, but it's not at that tipping point yet, where we could get, um, an additional year out of that road. This isn't taking into account what you're saying, Mayor. I get you're, you're, yeah, this is just saying, ah, it is, it's bad, but we, we could continue to use that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any question about that, right? It, 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 it's, um, between now and next year or the year after, it's just gradients of bad.
Right.
Right? We all know it's bad, we all know it's gonna get done, ma- ma- it, 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 it might get a bit worse, but it's already bad. The question really is about the financing part of that. And when it, when we're anticipating i- in the not-too-distant future, really, the, the, the largest, um, capital bond that the cities pro- in, in, is probably put out, right? Because when you look at the high school, yes, we had to bond it, but the vast majority of that is a, um, reimbursement for the state. So the public safety building, it's probably gonna be the most expensive building we've built to date.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, um, so a lot of stuff on this plan, that at some point, either this council next year or future councils are going to be up against a very large bond for a project with all these ongoing bond needs. And so I guess that's my question is, and it's a question, you know, you could provide your rationale, but it's a question for the council too, it is kicking it down the road, cause we're gonna have the same thing next year, right? It's, it's twenty-three million, we're talking, the manager's recommendation is thirteen million. We shove ten million down to next year, it's thirty-one million is, it won't be, right? Cause we'll just push it out and make it five years again, but we're gonna be in the same position next year, which is, uh, potentially having in a CIP plan twice the amount of money that, that council would realistically think about bonding. And, and then we're gonna have this big spike.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that, that's right where we're at. So the question would be, do you do it now? Because there's obviously room within that, but, within our, um, debt ceiling to be able to do that. And then, rather than pushing it out, and then you're starting to move, you're moving more on a track of where you should be for the amount of infrastructure that we have. Um, we should be somewhere as in that sixteen million dollar range of projects that you have that you're bonding out, knowing that though, that we're gonna have, as the mayor said, a project that, you know, probably goes back to what this building was back in two thousand and four of a eight, I think between, it was like eight million, somewhere's around there. That was the, that was the big project at the time, we'd never seen something that large. Public safety building will be the new one, uh, with today's numbers, and so you're right.
Do we have the capacity to do that road if we added it on? That's the other question.
We have the capacity.
We do?
Yeah.
And what are our interest, what, what are we paying for interest rates on bonds now? And then what are we making on interest rates on money we put in our CDs? I think it's, is it five percent?
It's five percent on the CDs right now.
And our bond, what do we bond?
Another half a million in CDs was just reinvested for the city, rolled in.
Ballpark bond rates now, I know they're a lot higher than they were two years ago.
Three and a half to four.
Three and a half to four percent right now.
Okay.
Cause I have a, a thought, we have a fund balance.
We have a fund balance that's higher than it needs to be, so I, I just did some rough numbers. At five percent, we could do, we could put into a, pu- fire fund balance endowment, a police fund balance endowment. Million dollars and a million dollars, we would generate fifty thousand dollars a year in interest. And every three years, they would have fifty grand that, I mean, they would have a hundred and fifty grand, so the police chief could say, I, I'm gonna need in three years, a hundred and thirty-five grand for the, for the, the, those things that they need for the car. I know that every three years I need to replace fire hoses. I know every three years I'm gonna need some, so all of a sudden, we've got, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity where our fund balance is really large. Do we think about thinking outside the box and doing something like that? And putting them into a separate account that's like an endowment, as long as we're getting interest like this?
Yeah, you'll have that conversation and, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and I think at three percent, three or four percent, I, I agree, if we're gonna do, I mean, maybe we've funded part of the road with the fund balance, I don't know.
Yeah, you're gonna have, um, you know, we're gonna have that conversation this fall when it comes time to the, for the fund balance when the audit report's done. I think we already had talked about just over three million dollars, you're probably gonna see, uh, that you're gonna have to say, okay, what do we wanna do with this? You're gonna have different options. You could move the, the ceiling from fourteen percent to sixteen percent and say, okay, we feel comfortable with that. Or you're gonna say exactly what you're talking about now. How do we, how do we invest that three million to help save funding for us in the future? That we were potentially doing some capital projects about it. They would begin the seed money into those accounts, I think is what you're referring to.
It's an endowment.
And then we're taking some of that, we're moving it in every year as an expense. The key is to ensure that we're not, at first, the way I was tracking you was, we'll, we'll bond out more and then allocate it in because we're gonna get a, a higher yield. Uh, we have to be careful with that, we can only, there are some bond rules, uh, with, between two to three years, we have to actually do what we said we were gonna do.
Right, no, I don't mean play the arbitrage, I mean, so, right.
But yeah, I think that, that's gonna be some great opportunities, and I think these are conversations that I think we need to have and we, we see what that priority is. I think to go back to the Marrow Road, the question would be, you have that room this year, do you look and say, especially if we're coming in around three and a half percent on a bond, do you say, okay, let's go ahead and move that where we need to be? And do you take part of that fund balance to help offset some of those increases next year?
Wha- what year do you anticipate the, um, first payments on the bond for the public safety building will be?
Yeah, we're still, we, we had that conversation on Friday, we're not there yet to get a good number. Um, I think my, my thought is you're gonna see FY twenty, uh, FY twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, if it's twenty-six, it's only gonna be a partial year, because it's gonna be an off-bond of what we normally do, if that makes sense.
Right, so, so really what we're saying is, um, as we work the budget this year and we work the budget next year, those are the only two opportunities to think about, um, capital expenditures in a budget without the public safety bond having a significant impact in that, Councilway.
Would it be feasible to, um, defer a decision on Marrow Road for a few months? I know if you go too far in delaying a decision, then, you know, engineering can't get the project done, but would there be a possibility, cause we'll have firmer numbers in a few months? Assessed value, total assessed value, revenue sharing, you know, school funding, all that stuff. We don't, we're always in the same position every year, we don't really know all the big numbers.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you agree to a six and a half based on the predictions that, you know, based on what I'm presenting here, it's gonna be less than that, all things, because we know, our valuation, we know we're gonna see an increase in, right? And so, um, that increase will automatically bring that down, so you're right, there's room in that. Um, I don't know if we can wait a couple, you know, I'm thinking about the, um, so the charter requires us to go ahead and move forward with a bond obligation and, and we have to do that, um, before June, before, you know, within June. So that piece we can't really move around, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate you bringing this up because I think it's a, Marrow Road, I don't think with the way that the city's growing is ever gonna get any less traffic. And no matter how much we tell trucks not to drive on it, trucks are gonna drive on it unless we literally put up some sort of a barrier, like put a bridge, right? You know, it's, and it's gotta get done.
Yeah, and I think, so a, a couple of points, uh, following up from Councilway. My understanding is the engineering is done on, on this, correct?
Mostly.
Mostly, and then if you, a couple of residents talked to me about conversations I had with the engineers to follow up on Councilor Melch- Milch's point. They're of the understanding from some community conversations out there that the full road at the three million is not engineered to handle truck traffic. It's, the hotel roadside is, is been engineered differently than the Minut Avenue side with the assumption that there won't be truck traffic, is that, do you, do you know?
Yeah, I, I would have Dan kinda talk more about the specifics on that. I think I understand what you're referring to, and it's the intersection of Hotel and, and, uh, Marrow was designed very differently, knowing that most of the traffic should be coming from those businesses that are on that end of Marrow.
Yeah, so I think their understanding wasn't a, and I'm not, I don't know that they understand this correctly, but their point they were making to me wasn't about the intersections, it was about the road surface and it's different. And so I think, I, I agree with Councilor Melch, it's very, very difficult to control the truck traffic. We can do a better job of signage and whatnot, but I think we're still gonna have some significant issues. So I, it would be great to have an answer to that, because it would be a shame to put three million dollars into a project and find out the life cycle of the, um, Minut Avenue and isn't what we thought because it's got truck traffic going across.
Yeah, so I, I'd be in favor of looking at Marrow Road as, because we are redoing Hotel Road. I mean, it's, that's a, that's an area of where we should be looking at commerce as a city. I mean, we should be extending our growth out into that area as well. I mean, the airport's out there, you know, there's a lot of industrial opportunities there, so.
I can have that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I would agree, I, when you look at the hotel side, I mean, with Pepsi, uh, I believe Future Guard, I mean, they just did a huge expansive building, uh, addition onto the, onto that. So you're seeing massive industrial on that side of it. Uh, I, I'm totally for redoing Marrow Road completely. I, being, working for the, previously for the DOT, I would be interested in looking to see, is it gonna be a total reconstruction where they're gonna go down and do complete drainage and see what their plan is? Because that, sometimes that's what you need to do, and completely redo the drainage and redo what materials underneath the road to do it. I've, I've been on a couple of those projects before, so I'd be interested in to see what their plan is for the whole entire road.
And I think there is stuff, there is water issues, there's, there's flooding issues and stuff, cause it's been thirty years since that road's been done, so.
Yep.
Mr. Manager, you mentioned that potentially you had some information if it was split up? Uh, if the project at Marrow Road was multiple years or?
Yeah, I had a brief conversation with the city engineer about, you know, could we and what would that look like? But nothing, nothing definitive on, okay, what would that look like for us? But it's something that we could consider, so. And I think part of that has to do with, you know, we have some requirements within adopting complete streets, right? So there's some requirements that would be, all right, if we're gonna move forward with this, we're talking about sidewalks on this road. Does it make sense to have sidewalks the whole length of this? Or does it make sense to have it more from, um, where we have some businesses and we also have, um, you know, some residential that comes in off from Marrow Road? Does it make sense to tie in the sidewalks there? But the whole length, now we're talking a substantial increase in that project. And so those are things though, I'll have for you and, and you can talk about it at your, your next workshop, and we'll make that as part of it.
Yeah, I think that's a good point that Council Cowan raises, especially if we think we're looking at a two-year period here before the public safety bond hits. If you could, you know, do half the road one year and half the next, that, that might be a viable alternative as well. We still get it in before the public safety bond.
Yeah, and, um, no, we're, I was thinking we could tie that into another project, it's gonna be reduced, but it's, it's gonna be the same amount. We had already reduced it, so, already made that reduction, so I thought I had another one, so.
So to just follow up on that, if we're gonna do it, I'm in favor of doing it the right way, rebuilding it so that it's, I can't remember if it's the, it's rebuild is the full down to the studs.
The reconstruction?
Right, yeah.
Other questions about capital, um, budget, Councilway, sir?
Yeah, uh, you had mentioned that Hotel is already, uh, scheduled to be done. Is there anything about Main Street out here to be done?
I can find out where the timing is on that. If you go, um, can you pull up the sheet for the roads? I think one of the coun- councillors also asked me which roads were gonna be included in these.
Oh, that was me.
Detail sheet?
So we'll pull that up so you can see exactly which roads we're looking at. Yeah, oh, that was you, sorry.
Also was, uh, Center Street as well, especially with that, it, it, what, what's the schedule for that? Cause that recently with all the rain and the, that getting closed down, I mean, that road is a mess and I've, I've, I've heard massive complaints about that road, and that needs serious attention.
So, so I think we need to, we need to be thinking about these, um, sort of as two separate buckets, right? Because Marrow Road's completely on the city. The issue we have with like Center Street is the same issue we have with Hotel Road, is, yeah, the city puts some money into that, but the vast majority of that's state funding and it's when MDOT decides it's gonna be on their work plan, right? Same thing, Court Street, um, Minut Ave, Center Street.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I can have Dan talk about the timing of some of those projects. Uh, Center Street is in that, so, um, but he can talk about.
It also has to do, Center Street is getting dug up by Lewiston as well.
Um, yeah, a very, yeah, a small.
A little bit of it though, right.
To North River Road. But we believe that's going to be in the next phase. It's not going to be in this phase. This phase goes right to Turner Street, here down Turner Street.
They're digging up there very slowly.
So you'll be seeing this through July, through July on that part.
If there's time, we've talked about Merrill Road, kind of, you know, a delay, your recommendation of delaying potentially this year. But for those other pieces that were in the plan but are now zeroed out essentially, are you thinking it's just one more year down the road? Or is it some of these things we've changed our priority on or didn't know if you have any comments on any specific ones?
You're going to, so if you take a look at some of the detail sheets that you're going to see on the document that we have provided for you, you're going to see some of them are, is the priority very high, high, medium? Some of those medium priorities you might not see until FY twenty eight. But sometimes it might be that something else in FY twenty eight's advancing over that because that's now the new priority. And so it doesn't get to the point till that, it's really, I talk a lot about tipping points, but it's when we get to that tipping point where it's like, okay, we can no longer provide this service either safely or efficiently. And so that equipment needs to change out. Perfect example is that back truck, right? That's a, those that went on the tour, you got to see that. We talked a lot about that truck. And we talked about all the improvements we made to it. And now it's still, still at the point that it is. But yeah, so I'd like to tell you that yes, some of those will move into the next year. Some of them may not move in for three years, so.
Mr. Manager, is it possible to get the debt retirement schedule extended for the next three to, you know, one to five years? Do we know that with some certainty?
I can do that.
Because I think it's important, obviously, there's some uncertainty with what debt, when it will start, when the new public safety building will start, but we should know what's retiring. And I think in conversations of what to kick down the road and for how long, it's important to see that in the full context.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, these are all ten years, so we should, we should be able to have on the schedule how much debt's being retired each year over the next ten years, right, Kelsey? They have bonds that have already been issued.
Yes, I can do that. I can provide that for you.
Yep. So for our, let's start off with, you know, the first one is that Whitman Spring Road. That's that cold mulch that we're talking about for that road. That's the hundred and fifty thousand that we're looking at. If you look at the reconstruction, if you look at this packet, I just jumped to page twenty six. Yeah, twenty five was that cold match. I think we've got it here, Kelsey.
And the details, should those match up with the items that you're recommending, which are on page twelve and thirteen?
That's correct, yep, yep. So if you take a look at the reconstruction, here we're looking at Granite Street, Hillsdale, Davis and Loring. You know, if Dan was sitting next to me, he'd be elbowing or kicking me to say, put an asterisk on this. This is all, as long as the bids come in where they, where we're projecting them to come in at and we can do the work. Page twenty six. This is the reconstruction. So these are roads that have a low pavement conditioning rating, right? They're in need of some repair, but they'll also require some restoration to the road base, some closed drainage, curbings and sidewalks. So that's, all of that is included in, in these initiatives. So that's the one point eight million. Page twenty seven, you'll see Blanchard Road, Hershey Hill Road and then Perkins Ridge Road. Perkins Ridge, if you remember, the, I would call it the north end is what, you know, that's a beautiful road, all we already redone. This piece is from Garfield Road to the club, the Glog, the Andersgagen.
The Yod Club across the fishing dock.
Yeah, it's all in that area, so, yep. And then Blanchard's to the end, so the city end of Blanchard Road. Then also Hershey Hill, which is North Auburn to the town line, so. I think we received a complaint about that road today, so, so it's nice that it's in this. So it'll be, it's nice when you can respond back with, it's in, it's in the, it's in the budget. It's, we're moving forward with it. So it's when you can, when you have to say, it's year ten and that's always tough, so. The next one is just the major drainage. So then look at the DOT match. So this one here is the Mount Auburn Ave, North Auburn Road and then also Spring Street. So these are ones that we will work with DOT. This is the funding that we provide for them to do the larger piece of this project. So that's from the BJ's entrance through to Turner Street intersection for Mount Auburn Ave. And then the North Auburn Road will be from West Auburn Road to Johnson. This is the surface overlay. And then Spring Street will be from Court to Elm Street. So those are the ones that we tie in with what the state's saying they're going to be doing. It's met their schedule as the mayor was talking about. And then the pavement resurfacing, this is Pono, Sopers Mill and Trap Road. Again, they're not the full length of these roads. You'll see where it's broken down. That resurfacing is key. This is the one we talked about before. Because we're getting in a better place with our reconstruction, we can do more resurfacing. And so as we expand that resurfacing, that's a line item that you've seen, that you'll see continue to increase because we're reducing the reconstruction cost. And then page thirty one talks about the retaining wall conditioning assessment that we already talked about when we did the CIP plan. But, and then we have some in there that's just for various sidewalks. And so we try to identify those sidewalks that are in the, you know, the most repair that's needed.
So we have fifteen minutes before the council meeting starts. So I guess the question to the council is, for the items that are on page twelve and thirteen, leaving aside the discussion we had on Merrill Road, what's the sense of the council, A regarding the number of thirteen point five million and B, the items that are included in the manager's request? Are there items that are priorities for the councillors that haven't made this list, that were in the plan? That you would suggest to be added, things that are on this list you would suggest to be removed?
This is the full list, those that are zeroed out, were in the plan.
This, as I understand it, twelve and thirteen is items that were in the FY twenty five plan that the manager's recommending. There's about ten million dollars worth of items that are on that plan that would be deferred out to next year's CIP plan. Council Wyden?
Mr. Mayor, I was kind of late in sending out my email to Mr. Manager, but my kind of thought was to see what prior, what roads are in and what some of the higher priority roads were coming, to see if that, maybe if we can get another road or two within this to help city infrastructure was my kind of thought. But by the time I sent the email, he just didn't have enough time to give me that information. So that's kind of where I'm looking at to improve road infrastructure and see if we can add another road or two into this, if it's feasible.
Yeah, so I, I think that, yeah, we can have that discussion. That would be fine. I would point out or remind the council that there is funds in the budget for an update to the surface analysis of the pavement, which I think is really important. You know, we all get calls about roads, but in the big scheme of things for the good of the community, I think we have to show some deference to engineering about where we'll get the best value for our capital dollars in trying to maintain what we have.
Yeah. Just want to, I'm sorry, Council Milks. I just want to highlight, just to make sure that, especially for new councillors coming in. So the manager's recommended budget, that's the operating budget. That's the final budget that I'll present. You will still have that workshop that we're going to do on Monday. You'll have an opportunity to make changes there. We'll track those changes for you. And then those will be changes that you then need to initiate as amendments to the budget, okay? CIP is different in this. CIP, there's no, there's no, the manager's recommendation gets adopted at the end of June if you don't come to a decision. This is completely your decision. These are my recommendations based on conversations with staff. Some of it has to do with timing, like, yeah, we really wanted that, but we could probably go another year before we replaced it, those kind of things. So those are the adjustments that I made in that. So I just want to make sure you know that your CIP, you provide me with other changes that you want to make at the workshop. When you come for your first reading, I'll have that exactly the way that you've requested it at the, at the workshop meeting. So, so that'll tee up for you already. The budget, though, will have to be amendments that you all make. And we can get those ready for you, those amendments that you might come to consensus on in the, in the workshop, but we can tee those up for you so they'll be ready. Thanks, Mayor.
So other than the questions that Council Wyden has posed to the manager, is there any other thoughts on CIP?
Question, you've got the Vector Truck that Public Works is requesting and obviously it's at the end of his life. It's needed. What's the, what's the usage level of that? Because I know that the, the water department, the water and sewer department use the same vehicle. And they've got one. And has there been any thought about coordinating between the water district and the public works? Or is that, they're both used too much?
They're both used too much. If anything, what it's nice is that it's a redundancy. If one goes down and there's an immediate emergency, you tap into the other one, yeah.
I figured I'd ask.
Great question. It's good. I asked the same thing. So you're, we're asking the same things. Because I'm like, hey, if they've got something, why aren't we using that?
Council Plats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I brought this up at a previous workshop or meeting, but I did have questions about the Clerks Record Restoration and a hundred grand a year for that.
Yeah, so we only have ten minutes left. If we can defer that till Monday. And I, a few thoughts about going into the meeting on Monday, I guess, I guess the first one's a question for the manager. So we were at, rounded off after the school adjustments, total tax levy about eight percent, we're now down to six point nine nine. We talked about some things last week. You'll have a list as we open the meeting next Monday of what detailed list of the adjustments you made to go from eight to six point nine nine.
You have that list.
Yeah, it's in your packet.
Okay, great, thank you.
So that's what got to the six point nine nine, yes. As well as a couple of other things that I made adjustments for. But it's all, some of the cuts that I made are also on that sheet, so you'll see both.
And I'll speak to, I can speak to the school committee detail in my report in the meeting as to what their cuts were as well.
Is there going to be somebody from the school, excuse me, Mr. Mayor? Is there going to be somebody from the school department in the meeting on Monday, on our workshop on Monday?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So just a couple of thoughts for going into the meeting on Monday. We've had some discussions about where we want to get on the tax levy. I think as we open that meeting on Monday, I think the first order of business will be for us to get a sense of the council of what number we're driving at. I think it would be helpful if the councillors think of that in terms of what total tax levy percent increase you want to drive to without the use of the fund balance, right? As, as I've had conversations with the councillors, it's going to be really important to understand what that number is because we have this one remaining budget workshop set. And if we're not all on the same page of the number we're driving to, we might come out at the end of that and have achieved that number, but not have votes for the first reading because people think that, you know, the reduction should be greater. So I, I think it, again, think, think about what you, what you're comfortable with for an increase on that line. And then again, I think we all need to be on the same page about driving to that number without the fund balance to see how far we get. And then we can talk about applying the fund balance either to reach our number or perhaps to go below that. So any thoughts on that from the council?
Whoop, sorry. So I have a kind of different approach to this. Instead of reaching a number, I, one I came back from the last meeting, I seem that we make, just going through line item by line item in the department, I seem that we made progress doing that. I don't think it will take a whole lot of time for us to do it, but I think we go through it like we were doing and we just go through, do we have any issues with such and such department? And then move on. That way we, we go through, we find where we're at. And at the end of the day, the number is what the number is. And we went through and we all had a say within what departments and we've all had, is everybody okay with, you know, city, the city administration, okay, we're good, we move on. And at the end of the day, that's what number we're at and everybody had a say within it. That's kind of my thought to look at it.
Yeah, I appreciate the thought. I don't think that'll get us there. If you remember from the last meeting, up to this point, through the discussions, we've reached maybe four hundred thousand dollars because the offset to the percentage was changing four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in our revenue estimate. So there is a substantial way to go. We could do that. I don't think we're going to achieve the number that we need to if we just go line by line and say this looks good. So I think if you have a number in mind, let's say it's whatever it is, six and a half percent. And we go into this meeting and we say, after the information that the manager provided, we got to find another four hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot different exercise in my mind than going through and say, okay, on this line, we think we can reduce poached its twenty bucks. And on this line, we think we can reduce ten thousand dollars in fuel costs. Personally, I don't think we're going to get to the number we need to get to with that approach. But in the time we have, which is one, one meeting, Council Wyden?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the line by line theory. I went line by line after the last meeting and I found between twelve and fifteen thousand and it was in our budget, mayor and council budget. And I'm not even sure if I threw those numbers to Phil and showed him where I was taking them from, that those even would work. Because I'm not familiar with some of the terminology. I really should educate myself better. But, you know, I, I just don't think that's going to fly. I think we need to go with the mayor's approach.
Yeah, I think a good example of this, and I understand that the thought process in that, Council Walker had come up with several reductions within Public Works. I didn't move forward with all those recommendations because once I dug into it with the departments, I learned that, oh, there's one that Council Walker wouldn't have known why that increase was. I didn't know looking at the line item. When I met with the department, it was, oh, we have a major project on Pulsover that's requiring us to remove a tree. And that increase is a result of that tree coming down that we need to do. I talked with Council Walker about that. He and I went through his reductions and said, this is why I couldn't recommend that full amount. And so that's my concern is that if we were to do that, I don't, I would not have every line item. And the other piece I don't really want to get to is you now require, you know, I wouldn't want to have every department director here ready to fend each line item. That would just be, it wouldn't be a good process for us. I'm good with, I'm good with getting to the number like the mayor said. And then, okay, here's a number we have to get to. Now, how do we make that work? And so then we're not going back and forth from each department as to why they need to make sure they keep that amount.
I would encourage councillors to go through the budget in each line, as people have done. I know some councillors, including I have as well, have had questions or identified potential areas for a cut. And I think that's great because come Monday, if, if councillors can identify some of those things and the manager looks into them, it'll give us a head start on where we are on Monday.
Yeah, Council Plats did that and I have a list of responses back for him on that. So, you know, happy to do that. And the department directors are ready to do that and provide you that feedback if you can, if you get me those.
Council Cowan?
Just in response to Council Wyden, my, my thought somewhat similar to that is, is, I mean, reminded thirty-nine percent of the increase is workforce. So if we're thinking about lines, in my mind, I go straight to, if we're really going to have to cut more dollars before thinking about fund balance, we're talking about likely having to remove positions and where, what departments would those go from? So I kind of been thinking in that way, but it's not line to line. It's more within department or how do we prioritize them?
Other questions from the council or comments? If not, we'll adjourn the work session and reconvene the council chambers at seven PM.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united, indivisible, perfect and just.
Adam Platts, City Council at Large.
Leroy Waters, City Council, Ward 5.
Good evening, Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward 4.
Steve Milks, City Council, Ward 3.
Tim Cowan, City Council, Ward 2.
Rick Whiting, City Council, Ward 1.
Belinda Gary, Auburn City Councilor at Large.
Excuse me, Mayor, I don't believe your microphone is working entirely. You may have to push the button.
Thank you. The first item of business tonight are consent items. There's two items on the consent agenda. Election of clerks to serve a two-year term. These are presented by the city clerk and an authorization for the city clerk to weigh the temporary food service license for the lobster festival event. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Been moved by Council Walker. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Milks. The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item of business is the approval of the minutes for the April 1st, 2024 regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Moved by Council Walker to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Platts. The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item is communications, presentations, and recognitions. In your packet, there's a memo to the city council from the planning and permitting director. This memo is related to the expected report by staff as previously ordered by the council relative to potential changes to the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district for the agriculture and septic implementation changes. As you'll see in the packet, the two work groups have been making significant progress. We're not quite able to finish in time to report to tonight's meeting. They intend to report on May 6th. This will not alter the long-term schedule as the action on the 6th will be to refer the potential changes to the planning board for review and recommendation. And the planning board will next meet on the 14th of May. In addition, we have one other item for recognition. I would like to read a proclamation. Whereas the office of the city clerk is a time-honored and essential part of local government throughout the world, being one of the oldest professions in public service. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a vitally important link between local government and citizens. And whereas Susan Clemmons-Delaya started her employment with the City of Auburn in August of 2007 and has dedicated her professional life to public service. And whereas Susan Clemmons-Delaya was appointed as interim city clerk, then promoted to the city clerk's position in 2012. And whereas Susan Clemmons-Delaya has maintained an exceptionally high level of professionalism associated with her appointed position and has diligently fulfilled her role as city clerk for the City of Auburn for 17 years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Auburn do hereby commend the steadfast service provided to our residents, city council, and city departments, and recognize and celebrate the dedication, accomplishments, and the well-deserved retirement of city clerk Susan Clemmons-Delaya on May 3rd, 2024. If, sir, if you could come forward. My next item is the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to address the council on any issue related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the open session. Move on to unfinished business. There is no agenda item for unfinished business? Is there any unfinished business to come before the council? Not seeing any, we'll move to new business. The first item of new business is an executive session, a discussion on a poverty abatement case, PA 2024-001, pursuant to 36 MRSA 841, with possible action to follow as Order 4904162024. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
Motion to move, second.
Moved by Council Walker, seconded by Councilor Milks to move into executive session. The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The council will move into executive session. A public session relative to the poverty abatement case, PA 2024-001, is there a motion?
I would move that the city council approve the abatement on case PA 2024-001 in the amount of $2,842.61.
Second.
Move by Council Whiting, seconded by Council Walker. Is there any discussion by the council? Seeing none, the vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item of business is order 5004162024, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease with Carroll Materials LLC and direct payments made under the lease into the intermodal facility special revenue account. The council will recall that we were previously briefed by the transportation director, Mr. Labonte, about the negotiations that were underway relative to this lease. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Motion by Council Walker, seconded by Council Wyffner. Are there any questions or discussion by the council? Mr. Labonte is here, if there's any staff question.
Yeah, I had a look through the, and this has to do with hazardous material, excuse me, and I was just curious as to, the lease was 12,000 for the year? Is that correct?
I think, Mr. Labonte can clarify this, but I think it's non-
That's correct.
It's non-hazardous materials, it's cement, and it is 12,000 for the year.
Explicitly non-hazardous?
Non-hazardous.
Non-hazardous, yep, it will be a move of cement into Auburn, and it'll be $12,000 a year for this. It's a pilot project to test a move from Quebec via Auburn.
Okay, maybe I misread that then. Is that, is that a competitive lease? I mean, are you comfortable with that being competitive, or is this a trial?
Yeah, I think it's a competitive lease. It's comparable, St. Lawrence and Atlantic, we've been working closely with them. It's actually helping to activate the Rangeley branch, which is that back section of the intermodal that has not been actively used. We'll be participating, there's a clause in there getting the scale operable again. The intermodal facility hasn't been used for this purpose in a decade, so we've got some, Carroll is going to partner with us and standing up some of that. If the trial period works, I think we'll then have a larger discussion about how they might scale up more operations here. So this is a low barrier, get them in, show that rail movements can work, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte.
Any further questions or discussion by the council? Seeing none, the vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is the second open session of the evening. Members of the public are invited to address the council on any item relative to city business that is not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name Seeing none, we'll close the open session and move on to reports. No items for the mayor's report, we'll have city council report, we'll start with Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to talk on the record about what I had done on my last vote at the last meeting, about changing my vote. I apologize to my councilmates and to my constituents. The thing is, the fact that I let, normally I try to inform my decisions based on my heart and on my head with the facts. I have to, in good conscience, I changed my vote from always voting on those previous motions in order to give more time for thought, more thoughtful consideration of the development up at the Gray Sloan property. The reason I changed my vote to no instead of going on with my yes was, is the fact that I want to be on the record that I do oppose changing the zone up there. I don't support the extreme development up on Gray Sloan. I know that previous engineers that have had, wrote studies, said currently that the topography would support the water going away from the lake, but because of all the changes, the current topography does not, in my, my understanding, meet the same topography as the, as what is there now, and I think that the developer has to go back and do some more thoughtful studies with the help of the planning board. I'm afraid that if not more thoughtful study is of the development of the area up there, I don't think, I don't think the amount of land will accompany all the things that I've read in the paper, and that's why I, and what I've heard through the grapevine, and that's why I said it's extreme development up there that I cannot support. I am deeply afraid that this could be the linchpin to cause future damage up there and potentially in the long run add to the mounting stuff of forcing us to do an infiltration system, and I cannot support that at this time.
Council Whiting?
Thank you, just a historical note, City of Auburn has had really excellent city clerks over the years. I personally knew Leroy Linnell and Mary Lou Magno and Sue Clemens-Delaire, and they're all really outstanding city clerks, and I'm optimistic the new one will be as well.
Council Cowan?
I just a brief announcement, we had another ad hoc committee meeting on homelessness. Things are moving forward, we're getting some good information, look forward to sharing that with, with the group. If anyone is interested in, in hearing more about that, please let me know.
Council Milks?
Nothing tonight.
Council Wyffner?
I'd like to shout out to and thank the Public Works Department for ride-along. They offered me to go out in a plow truck, great experience, and, and special thanks to the Public Works Department on that last storm, they were running around and doing great, great work during that storm. It was very long, and they were putting some long hours, and thank you so much to the offer and the work they've done.
Council Walker?
Thank you, I'd like to make a comment on the Gray Sloan as well. I believe the city and the planning board for this city has been working really unbelievable hard on what would go up there and what could go up there, and I think many of the science testing and other things that have been done have been all for the positive, and I believe before we'll build anything or let anyone build anything, it will be done the right way, and I think moving forward, you're going to see that, that whole area up there will become a development before it's over.
Council Plath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three updates from the school committee. First off, I wanted to congratulate, and I did on behalf of the city council, but the new superintendent of Auburn schools, Dr. Susan Doris. Dr. Doris is a lifetime educator and administrator in the Auburn system, and has been the assistant superintendent for several years now. So, a natural fit for the position and one that I know the school committee, the school department is very excited for, so if you get the opportunity to say hello to her or meet her, I encourage you to do so. Next update on our last school committee meeting, just a budget update. At the last school committee budget, the superintendent came back with an amended budget based on our, the city council's feedback. We had asked the superintendent to get to a tax levy increase of below, 5% or below, and the superintendent came back with just shy of $112,000 in cuts. Those cuts came from two main positions. One was the elimination of a position in the special education department. It was a new position, one that had not yet existed, so it was elimination of that from the budget. And second, there were $33,000 in savings from a health insurance line item. There was an overestimate in the original budget, so they were able to knock off 112,000. I believe that brings down the tax levy for the school to roughly 4.8, 4.9, something in that range. So, they did exceed our, our ask, which is something worth noting. In the same meeting, there was public comment on that proposed budget. There was no comment from the public, nor any members of the staff. Just a point of note. And lastly, the school committee will vote on this budget at their August 24th meeting, and that's all I've got.
April?
I'm sorry.
I hope.
April 24th meeting.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I just have a few things. One, I'm really happy to introduce our new city clerk, who's sitting here, is Emily Carrington. Emily is coming to us from the city of South Portland, where she's been the city clerk for the last eight years or more, and Emily is also an Auburn resident, so we're real excited about welcoming her to Team Auburn and bringing her on board. Emily, I can put you on the spot if you'd like to say anything, or, but we're, okay. She'll have more to add as she moves forward. And the proclamation that the mayor read, and we obviously are sad to see Sue leave, we're excited for her though, for this next chapter of her retirement. This is Sue's actual last council meeting, so that's why we held that, even though her last day is on May 3rd, we won't come back together as a, as a council for a meeting until, until May 6th, and that will be Emily's first day, so no, no better way than starting her out will be to start her with a city council meeting, so, so we're excited about that. Few other items for you, council. First is the, scheduled on April 20th, I should probably put my glasses on, April 20th at 10:00 a.m., which will be a Saturday, will be the Auburn Conservation Working Group. We'll have a community cleanup event on that day, so we encourage people to go to the city's website where you can sign up and be part of that initiative. Tomorrow at the Hasty Gem from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock, this is school vacation week, so during school vacation week from 1:00 to 3:00, the Auburn Police Department is hosting a Coco with a Cop. We've done Coffee with a Cop for many, many years, but this is an exciting new project for the police department to be available. It's a free activity, an opportunity for officers to connect with students during their school vacation week. Also, the National Collegiate Roller Hockey, a national championship is here at Auburn. They've started their practicing at the Norway Savings Bank Arena. This goes, this starts actually tomorrow through Sunday. There's games all week, so it'll be fun to watch, also a chance for kids to skate with players on Saturday at 4:00 p.m., so another great opportunity for our youth, and if you go to Norway, you'll see that, that new hard floor that's in, that's allowing the roller skating to take place. Last item I had is the, on the city's website is the street sweeping schedule. We are in full spring mode, so our team is out cleaning streets. It's good for you citizens, whoever lives on certain roads, to know what that schedule is, helps you know when to move your vehicle, especially if you just washed it, you may not want it on the side of the road, and so as we kick up some dust and, and start getting our streets cleaned. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
The next item will be executive sessions.
The next item will be executive session. For the public, we are going to take executive session number two first, as there's possible action to follow. Is there a motion for the council to enter executive session for an economic development item pursuant to win one MRSA, subsection 405-6C, for which premature disclosure would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the city?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Milks. Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor?
Opposed.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the council will be in executive session. session.